I'm going to give us just a minute to settle down and get ready for the, our next meeting. That was fast. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Ojai City Council and the Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency, August 12th, 2014. Roll call.
Councilmember Blatt.
Here.
Councilmember Clapp.
Present.
Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Mayor Protim Smith.
Here.
Mayor Strobel.
Present. Councilmember Blatt, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. After me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll ask anyone in the audience wishing to speak on items that are on the agenda, to be sure and hand in, fill out a speaker's card, give it to our city clerk, Rhonda Bayshore, and limit your comments to three minutes. And if you would, state your name and address at the podium for the records. We have no presentations. All right, commission reports. Any of our commissioners out there have a report?
Doesn't look like it.
Madam Mayor, if I could just ask the city manager, was Golden State Water Company requested to come to this meeting for a presentation?
Yes, they are here. Mr. Peterson was not available, so Robert Hanford is here representing them.
Okay, and they, where are they going to speak to us?
Item three.
It's a discussion item.
Okay, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is public communications. And any member of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda are requested to fill out a speaker card, file it with our city clerk, state your name and address for the record, limit your comments to three minutes. I only have one speaker card, and that's Pete LaFollette.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. People, 999 East Ojai Avenue. I had another close call at the intersection of Whispering Oaks and Ojai Avenue. Myself, I'm pretty agile, so I can get out of the way when a car comes, but the other people that live there, those in a wheelchair or elder, they don't react so quickly when their life is almost in danger from a car. The crosswalk, which has been slated there for too long now, the crosswalk and lights will serve as warning and also will calm traffic, and will make a driver imprint when they come in to that area of the city from Ojai Avenue to slow down, and also for those that are driving out of Ojai to keep it slow in city limits. Public Works Director Greg Grant has spoke with Caltrans about this project on an ongoing basis. I want to remind him to expedite this project for safety. And the Caltrans people, for whatever reasons, the decision makers are taking so long to start this project, their minds seem to be somewhere between their vacation, collecting their high salary for doing next to nothing, when this is clearly a health and safety issue. So if I sound like a broken record, that's sort of what's happening here. Nothing is happening, but it continues to be a real danger for pedestrians just trying to get across the street, move to the pharmacy, not being able to walk all the way down because of their age, all the way down to West Ridge Market where that marked crosswalk is. So please remind Caltrans to do their job. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Clark, if you would follow up on that and give Mr. LaFollette a call and let him know where we are on it, or what the obstacles might be, I'd appreciate it. That's all the cards I have for public comment. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on unscheduled items? Okay. Then we'll move to our consent calendar, and there are several that are going to be pulled from the consent calendar. There may be more than this, but I'm requesting item G be pulled. Mayor Protim Smith has asked that item H be pulled, and more than one have asked, actually, but, and item I. And I have a question about D. Mr. Clark, do we need to make any change to the minutes of the regular meeting regarding item G?
Yes, I think there is a minor wording change which Rhonda can share with us.
All right, so let's pull D also. So now we have a warrant, I have a warrant register. We have a consent calendar, items A, B, C, E, F.
I move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Blatt.
Yes.
Clapp.
Yes.
Lara.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Strobel.
Yes. Mr. Clark, regarding the minutes, that's connected with G, I think.
It is, yes.
Before you this evening on the dais is a corrected version of the minutes, the word "with." I needed to add an "I" in, and so it said within the Ojai Unified School District boundaries, the youth member would be within the boundaries. And then the ordinance that was put into the packet was inadvertently the wrong ordinance, so we also laid it on the dais of correct ordinance, which I believe covers Mayor Strobel's questions, but staff is here to answer any other questions you may have.
Okay, I do have one other question, and that is, in the, in the motion itself, let me read it real quick to make sure it hasn't been corrected. Okay, in the motion itself, we, we're introducing an ordinance which amends the Ojai Municipal Code, but even that was amended. So do we just let this go for now because we're, I'm going to ask that G be put on a future agenda? We amended the amendment.
Why don't we see what happens with G, and then you can decide what to do with the minutes?
Okay, so we're not going to, to make a, take an action on the minutes yet?
I mean, I'm not sure exactly what the question is about what's going to happen with G.
Okay, you know what? I think the minutes are going to end up being fine with the, the changes that Rhonda has made. So I'd like a motion on one D.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve item D on the consent calendar. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now let's go to item G, which is the ordinance related to duties of the Parks and Recreation Mr. Clark?
So, sure. Mayor members of the city council, as the city clerk indicated, the agenda report included the original ordinance, not the amended ordinance, and she has provided the amended ordinance here. And the mayor and I did discuss this before the meeting, and one possible action is just to continue this to the next meeting, so that you have the proper packet in front of you at the next meeting.
And that is my recommendation, that we continue this, I don't even know if it would be a continuance, to the next meeting, so that the public, the staff, and the council has the document that we're actually going to approve. The document in the packet is incorrect. Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to...
Continue to August 28.
Continue until August 9th, 26th meeting, item G.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll continue this item until August 28th. I'm still confused as to whether or not we need to continue it or just put it on the agenda, because it's, it doesn't need to be reintroduced, I think, but there needs to be a first reading.
Well, if I may, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the ordinance that you read at the last meeting is the same as what was put on your dais tonight. You, the ordinance, because we changed the language in the first reading.
Correct.
So, so it doesn't, it's been introduced, so this is just for adoption.
Right, but the, the ordinance that's in tonight's packet...
Right.
Is not the ordinance that the council directed.
That's, that's correct. We put, we put the wrong version in the packet.
But that's why I'm, I'm thinking that it should come on the, whatever the next meeting is.
Next meeting. That's fine.
For a first reading.
No, it'd be for adoption. You've already, you've already...
I think there've been too many, the changes are immense.
So, so the changes, the, the original ordinance was amended at the last meeting.
Okay, now there's my question about the minutes again.
Okay.
The minutes do not say that the council approved the amended ordinance as amended. The ordinance proposes to amend our municipal code. The council amended that.
Correct.
And that's not what the motion says.
Well, then maybe you want to correct the minutes.
That was...
Okay, is that, is that, is that your concern, that the minutes don't reflect that you meant, that, that the ordinance as introduced is different from what's in the original packet, is that...
We approved it as council amended it.
Correct.
And it is an amendment, so I know it's confusing, but we amended the amendment, and the motion doesn't reflect that.
So I would suggest, I would suggest that you go ahead and continue this to the next meeting, and then go back and revise the minutes accordingly.
Okay, so we are, we approved the minutes earlier.
I, I would, I would suggest that you reconsider that.
Well, you proved that... Okay, Mr. Fletcher, guide us through this.
You can, you can do that. I was going to say, for starters, the minutes, the minutes, I was going to say, I don't think the minutes are incorrect, because the, because what you introduced, you didn't amend it. What you did was, you debated and then proposed a ordinance with specific language changed. That's what was in the record, and that's what was introduced. So you didn't amend it...
Okay.
Because the, the ordinance as introduced has the language regarding the youth school district. So that's accurate. Well, we did, we didn't change what was early submitted, we simply, you debated a draft ordinance, what was introduced was an ordinance with a specific language I read into the record. So I, I think, in my opinion, the minutes are correct as stated.
So we're good with the minutes?
We're good with the minutes. And I can also tell you, you are, you, Brown Act-wise and due process-wise, you can adopt this ordinance tonight with, with the corrected language.
But I do not want to do that...
That's fine, that's your option.
Because the document in the packet that was available to the public...
Yes, that's fine.
Is incorrect.
That's fine, that's your option to do that.
Okay. Do we need a motion? We did that already to continue it.
Did they vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, item H, and we had a speaker, no, that's on I.
Item H, I would like...
Mr. Clark, either you to give English explanation...
...of what this will do for our residents, or if Mr. Grant is available, that would be fine, too.
So, I, I didn't quite understand.
Let me read the title, so that the audience knows what we're talking about. It's a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city's jurisdiction in the California HERO program to finance environmentally friendly improvements.
Thank you.
So we do have a representative of the HERO program here, and so I'd like to call him up to introduce himself and to give you a plain English overview.
Thank you.
That was well put, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. Dustin Reilich, Director of Municipal Development for the California HERO program. What the California HERO program is, is we're an energy efficiency financing program that was made available under AB 811, which is legislation back in 2009. It allows for homeowners as well as property owners, so commercial property owners as well, to be able to take advantage of energy efficiency upgrades for their, their homes and for their businesses, doing solar projects, HVAC projects, over 150,000 different projects, energy and water efficiency projects that they could do for their homes and businesses. They can upgrade those, and it's a new mechanism for being able to pay it back on their property tax bill over time. So it's a voluntary program, but the resolution is needed in order to make the program available, and that is under AB 811, that it requires that. And then also, you're amending yourself to allow for our JPA to actually be the bond conduit issuer within the city of Ojai. So that's, in layman's terms, how, how the program works. It's a fabulous program, we're available in 172 cities to date, we're on agenda in Simi Valley, we're on agenda in Oxnard, Santa Paula, and also, as of today, Port Wanimi, within the next month and a half to actually pass there as well. We were actually on the Board of Supervisors for Los Angeles County this morning, which was great, to move forward, so soon we'll be in avail, available in over 200 cities, but right now, we're available in 172 cities within California. So if there's any questions, I welcome them, please.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Okay, so let's say, as a homeowner, I wanted to put in solar panels to, for electricity, and the bill for my house would be $35,000 for installation, okay? And I went with the HERO program.
Yes.
So what type of interest would I have, and what sort of payment could I work out, and what could I expect, let's say I financed it over 10 years, what could I expect to pay on my real estate taxes?
I would have to throw that through a calculator, I honestly could not answer that on the spot, but I, I can give you an idea of what a 20-year, which is what most people do on a solar project, a 20-year amortization on that. The rates are between 5.95 and 8.95. It actually goes onto your property tax bill, so it actually does become, the interest becomes a tax write-off for you, as well as a homeowner. And then also, at the same time, our average project to date has been just north of $18,000. So an $18,000 project, that's why I'm going to use 18,000, that looks at about $1,000 every six months on your tax bill. So on your scenario, it might be about $2,000 on your tax bill, maybe a little bit less because of the, the, the interest and so forth, but to, to do your example and actually be able to extrapolate on the fly, that's the best I can do, is say it would be around that.
Paid off then in...
In 20 years, and those panels are 100...
That sounds, it'd be paid off much sooner than 20 years, if it was only 18,000, I'm paying...
Oh, I'm sorry, I, what I did is, I took your, your number of 35,000, I doubled that 18 to make it a 36. So you would pay it off over those 20 years, you would own those panels outright, and year 20 would hit, and unlike the lease products that you see on the market today, you would actually own those panels and no longer be paying any electricity. I take that back, you'd be paying some electricity, because of course, there's distribution costs and so forth that you'd have, so, yeah, it would bring down your bill extensively.
And if I sell the house in five years, it runs with the property?
It's designed to run with the property. If the lender or the new buyer does require for you to pay it off, then it will need to be paid off, but our, we've done about 14,000 projects to date, actually about 14,400 to date, and of that, we've had over 1,000 refinances and sales of properties, and we've only had a handful, and I say a handful, it's about, like 50 projects, where they've actually paid it off, and that's either elective payment, or a new buyer coming in saying, "I'd like it to be paid off." So it's designed to run with the property, that's property assessed clean energy financing, which was AB 811.
Okay, what other projects, let's say, besides going for solar electricity, would be covered by HERO?
You think of anything that you could possibly do at your home to make it more energy efficient, efficient, or water efficient? Climate control sprinkler systems, replacing your, your lawn with actually an AstroTurf or some sort of aggregate, being able to go out and do low-flow toilets or tankless water heaters, being able to do HVAC systems and replacing out your heating or, or AC units, replacing with a cool roof, an old wood roof, that you want to make sure that it's efficient, doing insulation in your attic, doing all kinds of different projects, doors, window replacements of 1960, 70 windows that are single pane and they're rattling or whatnot. All of these different things can all be financed under this instrument, it's, it's a phenomenal instrument to help out your, your constituents.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thanks.
Councilmember Clapp?
It, it sounds like a really great program. It's an opportunity to truly upgrade your home, and it's really important, but I do have one little question.
Sure.
Don't solar panels have a lifespan?
You know, they do have a useful life of about 30 years from what the manufacturers state, but the warranties that they give are normally somewhere between 20 and 25 years, so all of our financing, 100% of our financing is tied to the useful life as well. So a perfect example, if someone were to do an HVAC system, so heating, ventilation, air conditioning, it cannot be financed beyond 15 years, because that's what we've determined to be the useful life of that.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, we don't let it go beyond the useful life.
Good.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And we also do a lot of consumer protection things, in that we work with local contractors, so this is, this is a job creation program as well, because hopefully, local contractors will be the ones that are actually being put to work doing jobs and doing upgrades in your community, but we make sure that they're licensed, bonded, insured, and that they pull the proper permits through the city to make sure that all of those jobs are trackable through the city. And we also, we're an IT software-based company, so we have the ability for your staff to be able to look in at any point in time, have complete transparency into how many contractors are registered here locally, how many projects are being approved for how much, and how many are actually being done, which is great.
And one other real quick question.
Sure.
There was quite a range in interest rates, you had 3% just range, what, what is the difference?
It's 100% based on term. So our terms are 5, 10, 15, and 20 years. So a five-year term, the bond investors require a certain rate of return, and we'll see those rates actually come down over time, but because of the fact that we haven't seen a lot of securitizations in this space yet, the rates haven't come down, but they will in the near-term future, as we see more volume. But 5.95 is actually for a five-year term, and 8.95 is on the outset for a 20-year.
Like the tenant one.
And it's not FICO-based, it's, it's based on the, the home and a person having equity in their home, which is...
So it is secured on the home, so you have to be the owner of the home?
That is correct.
Right.
It's for homeowners, and if a person does own the home but has tenants in the home, they can upgrade it for themselves, but the tenant is actually the one taking advantage of that, and it's the homeowner that's guaranteeing that.
Yeah.
Yes.
And what if the homeowner has no equity in their home?
They don't qualify, unfortunately.
And they don't qualify?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I also did want to pull this item, because I was curious about the interest rate...
Sure.
And the impact that homeowners would have. My question is, you answered almost all my questions, I think it's a fabulous program, and why was, it was implemented in 2009, why, why did it take five years to get it running? Because it's, you've, you only got, there's like, what, 480 cities in California?
Right.
And you got about 170?
That's a great question. So what we did is, we actually started with the creation of the program in 2009, when legislation went through, and we took an approach of, I guess I'd say, Field of Dreams, if we've seen it. We built it, we worked with all the contractors to say, what's going to work to make this work for you? We worked with the bondholders to say, what's going to work to make this work for you? And then we came to market in 2011 with the product. We, we did a test beta in the Western Riverside area with 17 cities and the county of Riverside, and after we saw a lot of success, and we did about 1,000 projects in the first year, we decided to expand the program in February of 2013 to make it a statewide available program. And when we made it statewide available, that's when we started going out and, and meeting with different cities. I apologize to your city manager, when I met with him, that it took me a while to get up here, because I actually cover Southern California, and there's 253 cities. I live in Southern Orange County, so I started in San Diego, and San Bernardino, and Orange County, and LA, and then moved north, so I'm slowly but surely making it up this way, and I apologize that I didn't bring this to you a year ago, so.
Thank you.
And I, did you have another? There is a fee to the homeowner to initiate the loan?
That is correct.
There is an annual administrative fee?
For the collection process that is through the county assessor, correct, which is normally about $35 annually.
Okay, and there is a fee if you pay, choose to pay it off early?
Actually, there used to be, so that was in the staff report, but we just eliminated that last week. There's no prepay penalty at all, so.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
Because my next question was going to be, and if the lender requires that it be paid, but you've just answered that.
There you go, and, and the beauty of it is that, as this program morphs over time, we become more consumer-friendly, we become more, we hear more of the feedback from cities and from constituents, and customers, and contractors, and we make it better and better over time. So with 14, 14,400 projects under our belt, we're becoming a perfected product, and one of those things was that prepayment penalty, and we got rid of it last week from the board level, so.
And I understand that you work with the individual cities, so that your programs for improvements coincide with the city's requirements, building and planning requirements?
Absolutely, all of their permitting, all of their building requirements, as well as anything that they'd like us to help out doing marketing in the community, so.
Mr. Blatt, did you have a question?
No. I think it's a great program.
Yeah, great.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you. What's that? Yes.
Outreach.
Yes, please.
How are the homeowners going to know about this?
So normally, it is, it is driven from the contractor. We actually have, I have 12 contractor-based trainers that go out and train in the areas. Since we're just starting our footprint in Ventura County, I don't have a representative here yet, so I apologize, but we will have someone that is based in Ventura County to actually come out and train all of the local contractors, so the contractors, from the CEO to the sales manager, to the salespeople in the field, can actually have someone going out in the field with them to show them how to present the product. Obviously, when they show up at someone's doorstep, they're, to make a presentation, it's going to be, you know, do you have cash? Do you have the ability to pay on your, your equity line of credit? Or we have this product that's available. So they make all of the different options available to them, and our trainers actually train them to be able to present it properly.
Do you also have brochures for outreach, that can be put in the city hall lobby?
We do, yeah.
And do you have any sort of, could it be linked through the city website?
Absolutely, since we're very software-based, our IT department can actually help your city manager to actually get that onto your website, once it's available to your constituents, assuming we approve this this evening. It does go through a judicial validation process, so it probably won't be available till the late fourth quarter or early of, early first quarter of 2015 for your constituents. So once that does become available, we'll work with your staff to make sure that those things are made available to them, for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, thank you for all the great questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd also like to make a motion on item H, which is the California HERO program.
There's a speaker in there. Somebody wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, someone from the audience wish to speak?
Just a quick comment, I'm really supportive of energy efficiency programs in this vein, and I just wanted to make clear to the council and to the public that when we're acting on energy efficiency, we are preserving natural resources and we're acting on climate change, and that's a really important thing that for everybody to recognize. I think that's the biggest challenge that we are facing, so these are just small actions that we can make in our own community to act on this huge issue. So I'm just, I'm very supportive, and I just wanted to put it in that lens for the rest of the audience here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Come up to the podium? Give us your name.
My name's Cynthia Greer, and this was unscheduled, but I just have a thought. I actually had additional questions concerning, are there any charges to the local contractors for your training or your programs?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public have a question, comment? Okay. I hear a motion from council.
I move to approve item H.
Second.
Roll call?
Blatt.
Yes.
Clapp.
Yes.
Lara.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Strobel.
Yes. Item I, consulting services, buy-in between the city of Ojai and Stewart Consulting Services. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, this is just a technical revision of the contract that we have with Stewart Consulting. Right now, we're basing our plan check fee on the building permit fee rather than... Right now, we're basing our plan check fee on the building permit fee rather than the plan review fee, and we're changing that.
Councilmember Blatt?
Yes, I just had a couple of questions and then a couple of general comments. In looking through the table where it starts in 2010 and then 11, 13, 13, 14, 14, 15, it looks like the biggest change has to do with plan review. Is that, is that safe to say?
Yeah. So, in 13, 14, the, the plan review is based on the building permit fee, and we're proposing that it be changed and be based on the plan review fee, which is a lesser fee. So, the, if, if you, those two amounts approximately equal out.
Okay. And what is the, what is the reason for doing the amendment?
Because it makes sense to, to base plan review services on the plan review fee.
All right. Now, this is an amendment to an existing contract, and the existing contract with, there's, there's very little information in here with regard to the existing contract. I remember entering into it, but when does the existing contract expire?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Are we, do you have an idea whether we're, we're...
Are we waiting for Mr. Stewart to come forward?
Oh, is he coming forward? I don't see him. I, just anytime we're looking at an amendment to a contract, and if it makes sense to the city from a financial standpoint to amend the contract and the subcontractors willing to do it, I don't have a particular problem with it. In fact, I'm for it. My only concern is that...
Councilmember Blatt, the existing contract is in the packet.
Where is it?
Attachment B, page 2 of 9, is consulting services. It was entered in February 2010, and termination, I was looking for the date.
I didn't, I don't see that. Where is it?
On page 1-76? Or 75? Do you have that in your...
No.
I did, but he doesn't have it in his.
No, I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Oh, no. I got 1-72 is as much as I have.
You're missing all of this packet. It was not complete.
I apologize. You want to pull up for the next meeting?
I, I, what's going to be the, yeah, what's going to be the financial impact, Mr. Clark, if we don't act on it tonight?
There'll be no impact.
Okay. I'd like, I haven't got the whole packet. I don't have the consulting service agreement, so I would like to, I would like to put it over to the next meeting if possible.
Before we do that, Councilmember Laura?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I also wanted to pull this item more for anything, just clarity on the, on the protocol about contracting. How long the, the contract lasts? Is there an expiration? Or are we just basically reviewing it? Or are we putting out? Because my, my knowledge is that, for example, the audit, there's four-year terms for a certain consult, consulting group. So, are we really putting it out there for RFP to see if there's better opportunities there to save with the money, to save for the city? Or, that, that was my question more than anything.
Okay. And now that, now that I see the attachment, it says the term is indefinite until canceled in writing by one of the parties, which indicates that we can cancel it at any time. We did, we did have a discussion and a review of use of consulting services earlier in the year, and based on that, the budget was put together assuming we'd go forward with this. But, we certainly can review it at any time, and I think the best time to do it is annually when we do the budget.
Okay. So, he's been doing it for four years. Okay.
And I did have one speaker card on this item. William Ulrich?
Good evening. William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road. My review of this contract and this matter brings to light firstly, Mr. Stewart as, as a repetitive condition, is not a resident of the City of Ojai. He's a resident of the City of Santa Paula. I have no for fact that the City of Ojai has a retired supervisor for the Building Department of the City of Ventura with 35 years of experience, who is a resident of the city. You have a four-year audit perhaps, but the reality of the situation is, if it's audited, excuse me, reviewed by council on an annual basis as part of a fiscal review, it's not going to get the same scrutiny. This contract is being rolled over. It has 500, a mere $500,000 professional liability. That's insufficient according to current standards as consulting and construction professionals. It also has a $1 million general liability requirement. That is also insufficient. Typical public works and public agency contracts require a minimum of $2 million general liability. So, this contract is light on several fronts, and it is also being just simply rolled over for expediency. There is very little transparency relative to Mr. Stewart's previous billings and payments by the city. I have a printout of the last two years of his billings to the city, and there is no transparency. There is a monthly bill and a monthly check issued, and there's no indication or any breakdown of what the service is provided for, and the numbers are increasing. Now, from a practical perspective, instead of attaching the value to plan review as a percentage of a service performed, a reasonable approach is much like everybody here who gets paid by the hour as a consultant, and just keep it that way. Because there will be tracking capacity that will be very specific. But, at this particular point, I'm, I appreciate the fact that you've elected to pull it off the consent calendar tonight because it bears a lot of further scrutiny. And notwithstanding the potentiality of whether you want to continue, I'm not exactly sure what Mr. Stewart does for his money. I just know the numbers are going up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to continue this.
Move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I have no idea where we are now.
I don't know.
Okay, we are, we have finished the consent.
We've moved along.
All right, we have no public hearings. Discussion items number two on our agenda is review of proposed Ventura County Wireless Communication Facility Regulations. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The County of Ventura is in the process of updating and revising its wireless communication facility ordinance. And so, we've asked Mr. Kramer, our special counsel on this topic, to review that with us. You do have an opportunity to comment on their proposed regulations, which are still in the review phase and will soon be going through their, their environmental review. So, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, citizens, staff. I'm Jonathan Kramer. I'm a consultant. Last time I had the privilege of speaking to you, I promised it was not going to be death by PowerPoint. Tonight, I'm not so sure. I have a lot of slides. They're all text tonight. I'm sorry, but there's a lot of information I'd like to share with you and the public about what the county is doing. And at the end of that, I'm going to have a few very short and succinct recommendations for your consideration in terms of how to direct staff. By way of background, the county has been going through this process for quite some time. They've been reviewing their public right-of-way ordinance, and now this is their, the, really the big chunk of the ordinance. And the ordinance draft itself is many, many pages. I have tried to pull out the policy issues that the county is grappling with and identify some of the really top-level and most important points for your consideration and for your direction to us to follow up after this meeting. With that, let me start to put you to sleep. So, essentially, the, the first portion of this is to go through the policy sections and then talk about some of the highlights of the various things. And I think you'll see a, a pattern developing. But, this is the draft of the non-coastal zoning ordinance, and it has a specific section regarding the Ojai Valley area plan. The county has basically broken up into area plans to, I think appropriately recognize the individual characters of various elements of the county rather than grouping them as one. I think that's a very strong positive. Before I get into this, let me say this. What the county is doing is most likely to be substantially different than what your legal counsel and city staff are going to bring to you later on in terms of an ordinance. But, that's because we're very compact. We have very specific issues that are of interest to the valley, whereas the larger county ordinance tries to address many things. One of the things that we were talking about prior to this is the fact that this is an important exercise because as a practical matter, many people don't recognize where the city ends and the county begins. It's effectively transparent. And harmonizing, we hope the county's approach to zoning of wireless facilities in the valley is very important because of the discrete nature, the, the boundary nature of the, of the valley. As I've already said, that there's actually different ordinance for the right-of-way. So, this is the non-right-of-way. This is public property and private property within the county. I'm not going to read everything. It would, it would guarantee you going to sleep, but I want to have the information so that you'll have it later in, in the minutes. So, the, the county's goal is to minimize visual impacts. It's a good thing, and to blend the facilities into the, into the surrounding environment. Very positive. There, there is a requirement to conceal the, what they call the WCS, Wireless Communications Facilities, as much as possible. They've got various levels of camouflage that they talk about. I tend to use the word camouflage rather than stealth for this purpose. They're interchangeable. And at the bottom is my first major point. All WCS must be cited and designed to be concealed or blended in with the existing setting wherever, whenever feasible. I'll give you a preview of the end. Words like "whenever feasible" are scary. They're scary because they don't have a standard attached to it, and they don't, they, they give really broad discretion to how they're implemented. And you'll see this popping up a few times, and I've got a slide at the end more about that. This is another good slide to, to talk about. They've developed a bunch of new standards. That's not lawyer talk. They've developed a series of new standards for camouflaging, and they talk about screening roof mounted, roof-mounted facilities, really small panel antennas, things like that. And really, I think they're on the right path in terms of starting to describe what they think is camouflage, what they think is small. We'll talk a little bit more about that towards the end. This is a very dense slide, so I'm going to translate it. Number one is the county is proposing a matrix so that the best sites in terms of the least visible have the fastest path to yes. The fastest path to yes. Fully camouflage sites that are integrated into a, a structure without changing the structure would be issued through a plan development permit, and that's essentially their, their fastest and easiest process. In the ordinance itself, they have a whole matrix of, yeah, if it's this, you get this; if it's this, you get that, things like that. We'll probably have something similar to it, but it's probably going to have a heck of a lot fewer boxes in terms of it. So, the process, the county has a process that tries to meet all of their needs through all the areas. We only have a specific group of needs, so our process will be probably easier to understand. It's important to understand also that for the plan development permits, they don't choose, the, the county is choosing not to have an expiration. Once they're in, they're in. It's a, we lawyers call it, those permits will run with the land. They'll basically attach themselves to the land and be there forever. Whereas, the county is proposing the conditional use permits have a 10-year permit life, and that can be renewed. And, and that's probably closer to what we're going to be talking about because we want to bring back the wireless facilities into the planning process so that as improvements in camouflage occur, if it's appropriate to reflect it for a particular site, we want to have that opportunity. This is one area where we're probably going to diverge with the county in that it, it's unlikely that we're going to recommend that permits don't expire. There are all sorts of height limits that the county is proposing. It depends on zone. It depends on location. The maximum they're talking about for a camouflage facility is 80 feet tall. That's the county, and again, they're looking countywide. It seems to me that we would be looking at that, that particular specification very This, this slide is kind of difficult to understand what they're talking about, but what their goal is that they'd like to have wireless facilities that are camouflaged and not visible from public perspectives. Here, the words that I'm, I'm highlighting for you are "not prominently visible." So, I'm not sure what prominently visible versus not prominently visible means, but this is an area where we would probably be suggesting that it's one of the areas we're going to recommend talking to the county about. Again, I want to say, I think they're on the right track, but I think they could use some help from interested parties, including this city. This slide's going to be continued over in a couple of slides. They're encouraging a process to allow some wireless sites to be installed through a zoning clearance. Again, it's a low-level process. They're talking about colocations. The, the zoning process, this process is, to remind you, I told you about the fact that Congress passed a law in 2012 that changed colocations and what they are. The county's approach is to give some numerical values. The FCC is going to weigh in on this specific topic later this year. The latest information coming out of the commission is sometime in the fall, they will be releasing their rules, which will affect everybody. So, whether their idea of a zoning clearance for 10% is right, we'll, we'll find out. But, at least they've come up with a number that is fairly consistent with what the FCC is proposing. As a reminder, the bottom line is that once a cell site goes in, the law that I'm talking about, Section 6409 of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, provides for mandatory approvals by state and local governments of certain types of modifications that the government believes, the federal government believes, are not substantial. This is a huge controversy as to what is substantial, what's not, and how the federal government can say what's substantial for Ojai versus the county of Ventura versus Cleveland, Ohio. But, this is one of the reasons why right now, we're dealing with a very live issue. We're waiting for the government to rule. This is one of the things that controls our timing and bringing back an ordinance to you. We don't want to bring back an ordinance to you that has to be modified in a few months. Again, it's a reminder on the timing. They have a, they've got an interesting element here, which I think has some merit for us to consider, which is that if a site goes in and it goes in through a SEQA analysis or SEQA analysis performed, and the modification would cause that SEQA analysis to no longer be valid, they can't go through an easy process. I think there's real merit to that. Because our goal, of course, is, is to make sure for SEQA compliance. This is an element, again, it gets back to the FCC. Are they going to trump SEQA? We're not sure. Large, non-stealth WCS, which is for the most part a scary term because we're talking about big monopoles, the big steel things. They're still going to be allowed 50 or 60 feet depending... They're still going to be allowed 50 or 60 feet, depending on where, but it goes up through a PC review, Full Planning Commission Review. It's unlikely that we're going to recommend that the ordinance in Ojai can allow for non-camouflaged or naked towers. So this is an area where the county is different. The reason I remind you of this is because, again, my description earlier, the fact that you can drive out of the city of Ojai and, for all intents and purposes, still be in Ojai, as far as the public's concerns. So this is an area where it may be appropriate for us to ask the county to exclude this provision from this specific plan. We've got another one of the, it was too long to fit in one slide, so I'm going to do across multiples here. And this is an important one, because now we're getting into the Ojai Valley area plan specifically. So this is home. This is home for us. Their goals are appropriate. They want to protect the quality and the beauty of the community. We're all for that. They want to preserve the scenic view from within the valley, and obviously, that has an impact to us here at the city. They want to ensure the discretionary developments on the ridge lines are minimized, minimizes impacts from grading. They want to discourage proliferation of antennas and satellite dishes. Actually, they've changed that now to WCS on the ridge lines. Discourage is a word that, I'm thinking, we know what's on the ridgeline, what's gone in over the years. So looking at the ridgeline is an important issue, and I think it's one that you should probably direct us to comment to the county about. Again, more in terms of the discretionary grading permits and so forth. They want to preserve the scenic views from public roads or publicly-owned land. I would suggest that a concern will also be to protect it from privately-owned properties, so that we have a uniform, basically, if you're in the valley, it should apply. It shouldn't just be from this. I don't think their approach is wrong, because they're looking at it as the umbrella government for the entire county. So I think we need to give them some suggestions that are very specific to the valley in this They do have a scenic resource protection overlay. And read this as I talk about it. "In order to ensure the visual impacts of grading and attendant structures, like the buildings that house the equipment, are minimized to the maximum extent feasible." The last few words are the ones you should be going, huh? Now, again, this is, I'm giving you their policy, the operating language. If I had just gone into the ordinance language itself, it makes lawyers happy to read stuff like that, but I'm trying not to inflict that on you. These are the policy elements. But these are their words, "to the maximum extent feasible." Feasible is a very low standard to hurdle. And when we talk about that, "to the maximum extent feasible," what we're talking about is the exception, not the rule. That's the, that gets into the loophole portion. I shouldn't call it a loophole, but it certainly gets into the squeezy part. Yes, Counselor?
Mayor, can I just ask a question at this point? I'm finding that this real vague and ambiguous language that's been inserted in here is to the benefit of somebody. So who drafted this language? Was it a building consultant that drafted it? Because it seems if it was, if it were lawyers that drafted it, they would have been a little more precise with the language.
This is the, these are the policy statements. The actual drafting is, it's much longer. So this describes staff's perception of the rules. As to the authorship, certainly, the industry's been very involved, as we want them involved in our process, too. I mean, we don't want to write an ordinance that doesn't take into account the industry's needs and concerns, just as we want to take into account the public's needs and concerns. So the fact that they have input on an ordinance, the industry, it's not a bad thing. It's simply, what do you get at the end after you've shaken everything up and you pour it out into the ordinance? Where does it fall?
Right. But it's almost impossible to regulate with language like that. Or it gives staff such a broad area that they can either approve or disapprove, that when it's codified, it almost seems like it's going to be so vague and ambiguous that it would never stand up to any kind of scrutiny.
I take the position that staff wants to do the right thing, in any government. I also take the position that when you have words that operationalize these concepts, they have to be carefully chosen, so that if you're going to get out of the requirement, that there's a very high standard. I think, I'll remind you, I think I discussed it before, that in any wireless ordinance, you have to have safety valves. You can't have strict prohibitions, because that would violate the Telecom Act. I think they're well-meaning. I think that there are things that will, that will ask you to direct us to write to the county to make their standards more of a tough safety valve, rather than a easy safety valve.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, same type of thing, silhouetting. And the last two words of this slide, again, echo that policy concept. I won't belabor it. These talk about what it is that they're trying to do, and what they're trying to do makes sense. It's the, it's their weak safety valve that we need to, I think, help them understand our concerns, I think what the council's concerns would be. This is an interesting one. Discretionary development permits for wireless communications facilities will be granted only when it can be demonstrated that facilities are necessary for public safety or to provide a substantial public benefit. How many people here think that cell phones do not provide a substantial public benefit? Again, these are, these are the phrases and the concepts and the policies which are important to operationalize, because cell phones do provide an important public benefit. But if that's the threshold to get out of the obligation, then perhaps some tightening would be appropriate. Yes?
I was under the impression that a lot of these towers are being built not so much to use cell phones, but for on-demand TV and all sorts of other services. One could say that a cellphone is almost mandatory in today's society, but my impression was it was for a lot of entertainment needs that cannot be met, and that's not at all brought out in this document.
It is.
It is. Okay.
You've jumped a few slides ahead.
Okay.
That said, you're not going to like it when we get there. More on protecting natural terrain, a good policy goal. And they have a sign process or a sign program as part of the wireless ordinance. They're talking about all onsite freestanding signs shall be limited to five feet in height. I'm going to tell you that we're not going to recommend that here. We're going to talk about the smallest sign, and there are required signs, by the way. The FCC, and in some cases, the FAA require, most of the time, it's the FCC, require signage. For example, to identify if there's a registered tower, it has to have that ASR number on the tower. We want the building door to have a sign that says, "This is an AT&amp;T facility." We want the phone number on there, but there are much smaller ways to do it. There are also FCC-required RF advisory notices. Think we can do better than five feet. Pretty sure of that. By the way, the answer is very simple, which is the smallest, the smallest signage, that the goal should be the smallest signage. Putting a number, whether it's five feet or one feet, whatever the number is, it's wrong. It should be the goal of having the smallest size sign that meets the legal requirement. Now, that's a, are you having trouble hearing me?
It's not you. I didn't put my headphones on.
I'll get a little bit closer. Does this help? Okay.
Can the audience hear Mr. Kramer okay?
Great. Don't mind accommodating. I'm a consultant. I try and do that. Oh, it's going to be the mantra of the night. So here are words that come out of the language of the portion explaining the policy concept. And I've highlighted words from the document. Whenever fees, or wherever feasible, when feasible, provide a substantial public benefit, avoid or minimize impact, minimizing impacts. That's kind of an interesting one, too. Again, it's a sponge. And, yeah, you grab it, and it kind of comes up between your fingers, the whole thing. So good policy goals. I think there are ways that we can offer suggestions to help them make that sponge just a little bit more rigid. We're almost at the end, by the way. Really, promise. Here's the part, Counselor, or Mayor Proton Smith, you're not going to like. So the county is proposing including wireless communications facilities as a public utility. No, no, hang on. There is certainly merit to that, and wireless phone companies are public utilities. But then you have to go to the definition of a wireless communications facility. And you'll see here that it includes things like wireless internet, AM/FM radio stations, satellites, wireless phones and data, personal communication services, which are cell phones, a wireless communications facility is an air vent, air conditioning units, fire suppression systems, emergency backup generators. So while this was okay, this needs to be tweaked, so that you're not pouring everything in. As an example, well, I don't need to give examples. You understand the concerns and the policy considerations that I think you'd want us to express to the county. I talked about the fact that their CUPs expire in 10 years, but their planned development, their planned development permits don't expire. Here's my concern. Let's say a site goes in under a planned development permit, permit runs with the land forever and ever, and then, under federal law, the wireless carrier says, "Aha! We get to modify it. And by the way, under the federal law, we don't have to camouflage the modification." Can you see where that might be a loophole that would allow a non-camouflage site to exist forever? This is an important policy area. These things I'm talking about tonight don't get down to the minutia of the drafting. These are high-level policy issues that certainly are important and should drive the text changes below. And we have a working cellphone. All right. One of the things that I found conspicuously absent is that we have a planning area, they recognize it, but there's no requirement under the ordinance, as I've read it, for them to notify us of projects within the valley. I think there should be. I think we have an interest, just as they have interest for projects that would affect their sphere of influence. We have projects that we'd be concerned. And we're, we have a, we've been working cooperatively with the county, where there's a situation before where we worked with the county, but we have to know about the projects to be able to work with them. Now, this is going to sound crazy. Don't hang me. Don't, don't throw me out the door. But I would even go so far and be so bold as to suggest there might be situations where a cell site proposed for the county would be better in the city, because we could camouflage it better. But unless we know about it and have the chance to think about it when the project comes in, we don't have that opportunity. Along the same lines, I'm going to suggest an outbound process for our ordinance that notifies the county, so that they can do that. The point is, as brother or sister governments, how about as neutral gender governments related by somehow, we should be working together. It's a good policy goal. So that'll be an obvious recommendation. This is the last slide. You got through it. The recommendation's very simple. Instead of spending five hours here and going through each of the points, I've talked to you about the policy issues. I'd ask you to direct the city manager, obviously supported by your attorneys, to develop a letter to the county that expresses our policy concerns and asks them to consider it. And we might offer some specific drafting languages, but frankly, just as we want to have control over our document, I think, out of respect, we should tell them what our policy concerns are and let them figure out the words, because ultimately, they are a separate sovereign, and we should accord them the respect that we expect from them. So the direction we're asking for is simply for you to direct the city manager to compose a policy letter with support of by councils that expresses to the county these types of policy concerns, so that they can take that into account at the next drafting. With that, I have nothing but congratulations for you for getting through a pictureless PowerPoint. And of course, we're here for questions.
Any questions from counsel?
It's very interesting. I didn't look up the definition of stealth, but upon first reading, let me tell you what I thought. I thought this was something that the CIA would have control of, and it was stealth, and we had nothing to say about stealth communication. I didn't realize stealth means the same as camouflage. Well, what does stealth mean?
I could quote a very famous Supreme Court ruling.
Please do.
No, you don't want me to.
Okay.
It's something about the eye, the beholder.
Stealth is in the eyes of the beholder.
Yes, exactly. Justice Potter Stewart's famous quote. The answer is, first off, I don't like using the word stealth, because that's actually a registered trademark for a company that does that in the wireless spectrum. So I like camouflage. But as I said, they're the same concept. What is stealth? Stealth on this building is completely different than stealth on something else here in town. So these are very specific issues. So we talk about concepts of integrating it into the existing building structure. You know, stealth best occurs when a wireless site, I'll give you a great example. Think of a building at the, and I'm going to describe this for the public who may not know some of the technical terms I'm going to use. Think of a building, and it's a one-story building. At the top of the building is a parapet. For the public, a parapet comes up above the roof and kind of provides a shell around the roof, so that you can't see the roof itself. So it looks like the wall goes up a little bit higher. There is material available in the wireless industry to pull off a portion of the parapet and replace it with, it's a fiberglass material. It is transparent to radio waves. It's visually opaque. You can texture and paint it to match the building. So for the purposes of that, you can have an antenna behind a parapet, and it's completely invisible. Isn't that really the goal, is to have good wireless service and not have it impact the community? So that's probably the purest description of stealth. Other descriptions of stealth would be a mono tree. Has a different effect, but again, it's location-specific. A mono tree amongst other trees, for example, I won't give you the example. I don't want to pollute that discussion. Everything is location-specific. Everything is design-specific. So you come up with principles that say, "The fastest way to yes is the absolutely least visible." Because we want to encourage the wireless carriers to utilize the time-to-market benefit of doing a better job initially, rather than spending six months fighting. And we should recognize and reward them for that. If they want to come in and propose a standalone mono, monopole, which we probably would not allow in the code, but just if we were, that would probably be the that would probably be the point A, B, C, D, E, F, A, A, B, A, C. The really long, detailed process to show that there's no other possible, less intrusive way to accomplish it. The wireless carriers, as a whole, as an industry, are incredibly creative. But what drives them is time to market. If it takes them a year to get a permit for a tough, for an ugly site, but they can get a permit for a more expensive good site in three or six months, three months, the cost washes. These are the things that we should be encouraging the county and also things that we'll be bringing forward to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, I did have a question. In your opinion, how quick is telemarketer changing technology in terms of sizes of wireless facilities? Is it changing yearly, bi-yearly? It's going from small to large, or the capacity that a facility or what a facility could do?
I'm going to translate, I think what I heard is your question, or I'm going to repeat it back and make sure I've heard it correctly. How fast is the industry changing its designs to do different and more things?
Yeah.
It's constant. If you ask a wireless company what their long-term planning is, they tell you two years. If you ask them for three, they snicker. Because the market is changing that quickly. What's happening right now in the wireless industry is a rollout of what is euphemistically called "small cells." Small cells sound great, don't they? Excellent. We love it. Except, you remember the slide that I had from last time, I think it was in the deck, from the February conference that Joe was at? Where if you take the definition of a small cell that the wireless industry is proposing, that's 17 cubic feet... I built a 17 cubic foot model and stepped inside of it, and no one's ever called me small. So, words are important. Definitions are important. Small cells... I was in London a couple of months ago. In London, small cells are not much louder, not much larger than an internet router. And they're down to the block-by-block level. But they're exceptionally small. And I think these are things that we should be talking about, we should be thinking about because frankly, the smaller the facility, first off, the less intrusive it is. And that's our goal here, which is aesthetic regulation. We're not allowed to regulate technology, but we are allowed to regulate aesthetics. And aesthetics are critically important, obviously. But also providing the service is critically important. So, these are the balance points that we'll be talking about.
And Madam Mayor, there was a follow-up question to that one.
All right.
So, exactly what I thought, technology is constantly changing. And I can't imagine with this, it's no different. When you mentioned that the WCFs, further away, are basically, there's no expiration, I agree that we should probably encourage the county to add an expiration date. But would it be appropriate to even cut the expiration date for a CUP less than 10 years? Because of that reason, the technology quickly changing, and also because of the co-location regulation that's coming out?
I'm going to meet you halfway in terms of what I think is the right answer. If a planned development permit is approved, and it meets all the requirements, and it's completely invisible, as long as it stays that way, it stays as a permit. But if they want to come back to do a modification, then it should then fall into the 10-year. See, if you've got an entitlement, it lasts as long as that entitlement is there. But if they want to come back and make a modification to it, and obviously taking a site that's completely camouflage and then making it not is, from our purposes and our consideration, certainly a major modification, then that would then trigger a 10-year permit. So, there's a way of encouraging them to do it right. And if they need to pull it back, then it goes into the planning process. As for the 10-year limitation, blame me personally. Back in 2006, when the state law on point was being negotiated, I was a member of the negotiating team for the League of California Cities, and I was the one who suggested 10 years. So, it's codified into state law. And I did that because my suggestion was based on the fact that it's about as short a time as possible to allow a wireless carrier to recoup their investment. Remember, we're not just talking about permits. We're talking about investments that are hundreds of thousands of dollars. And to be fair to the industry, they need an opportunity to recoup their investment and make a profit. They agreed that 10 years was doable. We thought 10 years was a... You know, in the world of cities, in the world of planning, 10 years is really a short period of time. Doesn't sound that way to the public. But from a planning perspective, 10 years is a reasonable time. That's how we came up with it. So, the target's on me.
Any other questions, comments from council? I don't have any speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone from the public? Pete?
Question heard in the listening.
Up to the podium, after Pete.
Okay, after all that, I'll be real brief. After the Grand Street cellphone tower challenge with the citizens answered, I looked up on the internet beings of resonant frequency. That is, we are directly affected as human beings by that which is in our environment and is either an intrusion or a positive health effect. Cellphone towers, hands down, involves a lot of unhealthy self-health effects, including carcinogens, neurological disturbances, long list. He spoke of packaging cell towers as camouflage or as an invisible tower. I would suggest making an invisible tower by not allowing any more in to the valley in the first place. He also cited his range of 250 cities in Southern California that he's consulting with on cellphone towers. I would like to make that 249. I would like you to take Ojai completely off of your map of prospective cellphone tower cities.
Thanks.
Mr. Wireick?
Listening to you speak about London, a question occurred to me. I call those distributed systems, is that the proper term to use for what you're describing? I've seen them actually put in streetlights around London, pictures of that. Is that what you're referring to?
Through the mayor, the answer is yes. They're called distributed antenna systems. That's a technology.
And here's my question. If those are not included in the policy rubric, in the policy statement, does that in effect discourage them when they in fact should be encouraged? You spoke about it's not so much cost, but getting things approved. If, for example, a monopole is presented right outside the city limits, and the city could come back and say, "You know, we'd rather have a distributed system," if that would be a substitute for a monopole or a co-location enhancement, is the lack of inclusion of the distributed system option in the policy a problem in terms of in effect discouraging those when those might be the best alternative?
Through the mayor. Local governments are allowed to regulate aesthetics and not technology. So, in the ordinance that will be presented to the city, it won't talk about a specific type of technology. It'll talk about aesthetics, process, speed to permitting. And the hallmarks of those are, the smaller and less visible, the faster the processing to get to a yes. So, any technology will be included in it, not excluded.
Okay. And that's where the distributed systems will come in as a possibility for preference in terms of regulatory process.
Through the mayor. By the way, for the public, I use that phrase through the mayor because I have to address the council. So, when I address people in the public, I have to do it through the council. It's just, it's one of those arcane protocols that we follow. So, through the mayor. We'll be bringing forward technologies in zero parts of this ordinance. We'll be bringing forward aesthetic issues, the things that we are allowed at the federal level to deal with. And to be fair for the speaker who had the question before, I think it's important to remember and to remind the public that under federal law, settled federal law, we are not allowed to deny a cell site if it is shown that it is designed to comply with the FCC rules. That's the threshold test. If it is, then that issue goes off the table. We're not allowed to consider anything further. We're still allowed to consider the aesthetic impacts. And there's a whole body of case law that talks about significant gap, least intrusive means, alternative sites analysis that goes into those aesthetics. But once RF is shown to comply with the FCC rules, there's a bright line on that. To tell you what's happening on that, I told you before that the FCC is currently in the process of revising its national rules. And we're expecting those rules to come out any day. Also, as a reminder, I am the editor of the FCC's revision to their national guidance to local governments on RF safety compliance. And in fact, I'll be at the commission in late November presenting a draft of the new Local Government Officials Guide, which is now going to be called the Intergovernmental Affairs Commission Guide. But these are issues that the cities have keen interests in because obviously, this is an area of interest to the public. But it's also an area of interest to the federal government, which is why they've set a very strong standard, a line. We go up to the line, but we do not cross the line. Thank you for allowing me that additional response time.
Mr. Green?
Hi, Stan Green. I'll tell you now, I listen to this, and it scares the hell out of me. Because it really, there's no way of regulating when you've got concepts like feasible, presumably camouflage, visible, substantial, minimize. Those things have absolutely no meaning when you're running a city or a county or anything else. And what it does is it says, "We have to anticipate all the circumstances that some company can throw at us and try to figure out a way to stop that if we don't like it." I think we ought to be looking at the concept as we set up that we want them to make a proposal to us that we have to approve. Okay? And that within that, we put out that aesthetics are very important to us and whatever other concept. But then, their proposal should really have findings that have to be approved by the governing body. You know what I'm saying? That it's a different way of saying, "We're going to give you rules. If you follow all the rules, you're in." You know, and we don't know what you're going to come up with, ever. Because the technology changes, your financing changes, your approach changes, your publicity changes. The whole world of technology can be different. We had, if you remember, down on, I don't know if it was Black Mountain or one of those, there was supposed to be an antenna put up. And they absolutely insisted it was necessary, and it had to be up there and as big as it's supposed to be. And when the community said no, they figured out that they could put an antenna on one side of the hill, lower down, wire it over to the other side of the hill with another antenna that would do the transmitting, and that you wouldn't be able to see those antennas at all. But they wouldn't have done that if the community hadn't said, "We don't want a big thing sticking up on the ridge." So, they figured out a way to make it happen this way. The companies are going to find the cheapest way to do what they want to do. They will want the biggest and quickest return on their investment. And the only protection a community has got is if they take control before this happens. That is, we will decide based on your proposal and your findings. We will allow you to then come in. But our basic approach is, it's up to the community and its representatives to decide if you justify what you're doing. Rather than, "We're going to tell you what's okay, and you can work your way around it." You know what I'm saying?
Thank you, Stan.
Brief response?
Do you like to respond to that?
Thank you very much. Through the council. Just as a point of clarification, it may not be clear to everybody here what my role is here. I work for the city as a legal and technical advisor. So, I'm working for you to do two things. Number one is to make sure that you have the best possible ordinance. And number two, that ordinance complies with state and federal law. I think Mr. Green will be happy to know that the goals that he has talked about are the goals that are very common in modern wireless ordinances, which is that there is a path of review that is simply not coming in. And that the sites that are not visible or the least visible are the ones that receive the smoothest path that accomplish the goals that he has specifically described. So, certainly, I think we're consistent and on the same page.
Mayor? And I'd like some words in our ordinance, like, "As feasible, and maybe, and if it looks okay, and whatever we think," kind of words. Can we throw those in there, too, that gives off a little more latitude to say?
Would you mind terribly if we had higher standards that say that if you want to fall out of our strict requirements, you have to show by compelling evidence?
Okay, good.
That's actually, those are words...
I was wondering what the words where you would suggest we substitute.
Compelling, substantial and compelling evidence. There are various standards. But because this is an area that is subject to court rules, and the courts have said that these things belie a bright-line test. It's almost word-for-word for the key decision in the Ninth Circuit. We have not only the right, but frankly, the duty to require a very high showing that if you're going to want to get out of some requirement within the City of Ojai's ordinance, it's not just by saying you have to and standing on a crack and crossing your fingers. But you've got to show that there is no less intrusive way. And I will tell you, as an RF engineer, I'm going to change hats. It comes off easily because I've got nothing holding it on. As an RF engineer, it is virtually impossible for a real RF engineer to say there is one and only one solution, and this is it. I've been working in this area before I became an attorney. I've been working in this area of wireless siding for local governments for 20 years. I've reviewed thousands of projects. There has not been one time, one time in 20 years, that a wireless carrier has succeeded in pushing the one and only one solution. Because frankly, you all know why. It's counterintuitive. One site? Here's the thing that you should remember, and it's not necessarily clear to the public. Mr. Green brought it up. The least intrusive solution may be two sites. We're not precluded from that. We want to be careful about requiring things like that. We want to basically say, "If you can't do it with one within our code, well, that's not the way to get out of our code. Talk to us about two." So, Mr. Green hit that one right home. Home run on that one.
That's Stan. Anyone else come forward?
No, I thought that Stan said was along with what Mr. Green was saying, actually.
And give us your name.
My name's John Cotum, and I'm a consultant.
Good.
Yes.
All right.
And I perform consultations specifically about RF, working with people who are concerned about health issues. And I'm well aware of the federal regulations, but I just wanted to put my... And I'm well aware of the federal regulations, but I just wanted to put my two cents in there, that based on the fact that I've worked with numerous people who have health issues from technology in general, not just wireless towers, and we're talking about technology that is growing and growing and changing all the time, we're being bombarded by electrical installations in general. So my encouragement is that we adopt the most restrictive ordinances that we are legally capable of doing as a community, to protect our way of life here, in this community, that I don't believe that we need more and more and more technology. And as I say, I understand that there are legal ramifications, but that we should use whatever means are available to us to create a strict ordinance, that we don't easily allow the continued proliferation of more and more towers on every rooftop in our valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Quilisi?
Yes, ma'am. Steve Quilisi, 516 West Eucalyptus. I haven't memorized the entire packet here, but I didn't hear anything in your presentation, sir. Or did I see any, the packet has detailed stuff beyond what you showed on your slides. I didn't see anything about the need for a facility. When the Grand Avenue, Grand Avenue facility was proposed, my first question was, "Do we need it at all?" And I'm wondering if that's a part of any of the consideration when something is proposed to put a tower, or a series of towers, or whatever, in here? Is, is that, does, does the proposing contractor have to show that there is an, that there is an unmet need at the present, or proposed, or projected, that would require that kind of a facility?
Before Mr. Kramer answers, I want to remind the public that this is the County of Ventura's ordinance. This is not the City of Ojai's ordinance. We're reviewing it because we intend to respond to it, but it isn't the city's ordinance.
We're hoping to influence the county ordinance. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. Through the council, as the mayor has correctly pointed out, we're dealing with the county ordinance right now, and providing them with policy guidance, as would be equivalent to a friend of the court brief. However, when we draft our rules for the City of Ojai, there will be standards of proof required, so that it is clear that there is a need, and that the site that's proposed is the least, or the sites, is the least necessary to accomplish the goal. Here is the, here is the issue that befuddles all local governments. First off, we regulate in arrears. We always do.
Could you talk into the microphone?
My apologies. We regulate in arrears. We come up with regulations, and then very smart people who are introducing new technologies come up with something new, and then eventually, we chew up. This is simply the, this is simply the matter of government. We also have various interests that suggest that a wireless company wouldn't want to spend a quarter of a million dollars to do something, to build a site, if it weren't, in their view, necessary. The federal government, the law on point, says that we can't prohibit, or have the effect of prohibiting, the provision of a telecom service, in this case, wireless. So again, there are federal pressures, so we can't just say no. And from a, from a community standpoint, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, as a practical matter, probably, most everybody in the audience has a cellphone. Everybody who has a modern car has a cellphone built into the car. If you go buy an ATM machine, or a modern Coke, or a soda vending machine, they have cellphones built in, because the cellphones call and say, "Hey, I'm full of coins, come empty me," or, "I'm low on Diet Cokes, come refill me." So it's a technology that benefits the public. The city's goal should be, I believe, subject to the council's adoption, since they ultimately control these decisions, to balance these issues, to protect community aesthetics. That's ultimately what we're allowed to do. And if we can do that, and allow the service to be provided, that's probably the best policy balance we can achieve, and what we certainly hope to achieve. But I want to be very clear, that the city attorney and the council have made it abundantly clear that there are thresholds, there are hurdles, there are need to show here, rather than coming in and saying, "We just want." So you'll see that reflected later on, when the, when we have discussions on early drafts. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Good, back to council. Any comments, questions from the council? Council's pleasure.
I, I think that Mr. Kramer's suggestions to make the language less fuzzy, and to make it more clear for our ordinance, and to give also the county's ordinance direction in that pursuit, are in agreement with, I think, and Mr. Kramer thinks, and what Mr. Green thinks. So I think you've gotten direction on, we'd like to have less of this wishy-washy language, and more direct what is acceptable and what's not.
Mayor Protem, to amplify what you're talking about, so that we have clear direction, what we're looking for is your direction as council to us, to prepare a policy letter to advise our sister government on our concerns, and to, frankly, to trust your staff to embody these in a letter that we need to get over to the county relatively soon. So I don't believe it's going to come back to you before it goes, so we'll ask for forgiveness later on. How's that?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to the effect of what Mr. Kramer just said.
Including the forgiveness?
Including the forgiveness.
All right.
Second?
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, in part, it's what you're seeing up on the screen, to direct the city manager to prepare and tender a guidance letter to the county, offering specific recommendations to amend current draft WCF regulations. And added to that was...
Forgiveness.
Mr. Kramer?
Forgive.
In addition to forgiveness.
Through the mayor, that this, we want to get this letter to the council, I'm sorry, to the, to the county as quickly as possible, so this letter is not going to come back to the council until after it's sent. But it will, it will-
Doesn't limit the amount of public review, sir?
It will embody the direction of the city council, as we've talked about tonight.
It sounds like we have some questions out there, but I want to address the comment about eliminating public review. I'm going to say again, this is a draft of the County of Ventura's ordinance.
It's not ours.
We are going to make comments in a letter suggesting that it be tightened up, suggesting the city's preferences.
And also, as a reminder to the public, through the mayor, every person in this room has the right to comment on the county's ordinance, and we, I believe the council would want to encourage the public to do that.
Absolutely. So remember, the, it would be very important for you to make comments to the County of Ventura. And I know we have a lot of comments, but we also have an agenda that we need to move through. We have gone through it, I've opened it, I see you, but I'm ready to move on, on the agenda.
Yep.
So-
Madam Mayor, with your permission, council, I will say good night.
Good night.
And I will see you next time.
And we forgive you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
The next item on the agenda is testing and water supply issues.
Fire flow testing.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As a result of a letter from flow back in May, we've been discussing fire flow in the city, and in particular, the Ventura County Fire District volunteered several meetings ago to work together with Golden State Water, to perform some testing on our fire system, to make sure that it's adequate, and to address any problems that they find. And so Chief Plot is here today to report the results of that effort, and then we can also respond to related questions.
Chief?
Welcome home.
I'm, I'm sorry. I also, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, Golden State Water does have a representative here, Robert Hanford, and he will be able to address any questions that we have for them.
Okay. Mr. Hanford, would you like to make a comment before the chief?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Robert Hanford with Golden State Water Company. Ken Peterson had a scheduling conflict and could not make it tonight, so I'm here this evening. I also wanted to share with you, you may not be aware, but Ken Peterson will be retiring from the company at the end of August. And effective September, I will be the Coastal District General Manager for Golden State Water Company.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Yes, Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council, Norm Plot, Division Chief for the Ventura County Fire Department. As you well aware, last council meeting, we gave you an update, and wanted to follow up with some additional preparation, and our final findings, based on council's direction back on the meeting on June 10th. So on the fire flow and hydrant inspection report, these are the findings. Let me see here, make sure we go forward. This is as of July 31st of 2014, a council's direction that the items be completed. Phase one was the flow test within, with fire prevention staff to accompany Golden State Water's personnel with the testing of, of, what was agreed upon was 14 hydrants within the five to six flow grids within the city of Ojai. So during that, we tested 14 hydrants, we flow tested by Golden State Water Company staff, and we monitored, that, those efforts were monitored by the Ventura County Fire Department Prevention Staff. And I'd like to also say that I have Ryan Cry. Ryan, if you could come up, just have you come up over here. Ryan is a member of our Fire Prevention Bureau, and is also acting as the interim fire marshal for a short time here. So we represented the city, so this represented the city areas. As a result, consistent with the meeting of the fire, as a result, consistent with meeting fire flow, pressure, and gallons permitted requirement. So basically, what that means is that we did observe the static residual pressures that Golden State was getting during the hydrant flow test, and I believe Rob Clark was with me, and we actually went out and observed one, so he could see firsthand what was going on. After those flow tests were done, and we, we spread it out over several days, so that we didn't impact the service delivery, our findings was that, consistent with Golden State Water, that the system in the City of Ojai does meet the required fire flows for adequate fire flow at the time that we tested. So all the, all the hydrants flowed above 500 GPMs for existing areas that are, that are within the city, and they were consistent with passing the fire flows within the commercial district as well. Phase two was physical inspections within the system. We inspected 308 hydrants. Those hydrants, it does not include those inspected by Golden State Water in the area of the main break that happened on Ojai Avenue here this past month. It represents the completion of all the inspections. All the hydrants are considered available for use. So all the hydrants within the city do work. If we had a fire, we can open the valves, we have access, and they're in working order. There is some, there is some areas. We have generated 33 hydrant repair notices, and those range in, from leaking packing to maybe a couple of the valve stems were bent, difficult to open, which is about 10% of the, of the hydrants within the city that need some type of repair. Of those, to be fair, four of those that we reported on were not in Golden State Water, but were in a private provider's service area. Three of these belong into an alternate purveyor, and the district has requested return of those repair orders, so we can get them to the proper purveyor. We completed the project required by the, by our prevention staff and our field staff, and we've also have in here a packet of GIS updates that we have given to our mapping, so that we can better identify the location of the hydrants within our GIS database. We, we did get map, the most recent map from Golden State Water, which is the 2009 revision, and during that, we reviewed the database provided by Golden State Water. And I got to tell you, that was a painstaking process. This gentleman here on my right used Google Earth. We wanted to make sure that we validated that when a hydrant was in a spot, that, that it was, was there. He painstakingly went through their database to make sure it was, was adequate. We did find a few issues that we brought to the attention of Golden State. There does appear in their database to be several duplicate listings, so a hydrant, some hydrants are listed twice, and some hydrants are listed by two location descriptions. Some hydrants are incorrectly noted as within the city, which, when they're really outside the city, and that was kind of a wash. It was like five and four. So some were in, and especially in the area of Del Norte, some of that, where the city boundary is, is, you know, it is difficult in some places. So the current status is that we did inspect the project, we completed it on time, we are confirming the status of submitted repairs. We've submitted the packet of the GIS mapping updates, so that we can better make sure that the hydrants do reflect on the maps, and we're working with Golden State Water on acquisition of the GIS hydrant map layer that we'll be installing. So the old map layer, we just want to update that, so that's, it's more current today. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. The other thing, one thing I would like to say from historical perspective, and I talked to a city manager about this, is that July 1st of 1985 is the last time that the city, well, not the last time, but it was a very intense fire called the Wheeler Fire, and the city council recognized Ventura County Fire Department, and all the fire departments across the state for providing the service. Tom Farmer was able to get it, was gracious, and found a rock that's sitting at the Y that's recognized the efforts of firefighters from all over the state that came here during the Wheeler Fire. But during the Wheeler Fire, we didn't lose a single structure, and that was fire impinging on Ojai, from Omaha, Ojai, all the way to Thatcher School. And so, and I've been on fires within Southern California, where the system has totally ran out of water, and, and it's not that far from here. And that's a scary thing for a fire department not to have water. I mean, we had to break down fences and draft water out of pools. I think the good news is that we have seen the valley threatened by fire, and, you know, and that's, that's only been 29 years ago. The next fire that threatened the valley was Ranch Fire, that came in to, basically, Meditation Mountain is where the footprint of the fire stopped, we were able to catch the fire. So we have, in recent memories, been threatened with fire, and been able to have enough water to be able to adequately suppress the fire. And I would say to you, that this year, the threat is, is real with the drought, and I would say that every resident that's listened to this needs to be vigilant, you know, especially with a wind-driven fire. We saw it in Glendora, you know, where, where the fire spotted 10 blocks in from the, from the, what would you consider the wildland. So we just need to be aware that we're talking about water, and we're talking about fire. This valley has seen it, and we'd like to think that the residents have done a good job. I think the flow has done a good job in bringing these issues up, concern citizens, to make sure that, that these issues are taken care of, and that they're addressed. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And thank you for your diligence, too, and all of our, our departments. Comments, questions, council members?
No, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You've become a regular up here.
You have no questions from council? And I do have some speaker cards, I believe. William Wierich? William Wirek.
Bill Wirek, 607 North Blanch. Chief, again, I want to echo the appreciation for the way you've jumped on the issue, because I, remember, the core issue was the fact that no one had looked at these hydrants in so long. And I think we all agree that that's, that was an unacceptable situation, that they need to, need to be looked at on a periodic basis, and, and that was the problem. Pretty much any valve that gets installed needs to be moved every once in a while, and if it's not moved for 10 or 15 years, you're asking for trouble. And I think that's, that's the point. I want to raise a couple of issues. One is that I'm very happy to see the city proceeding with the intervenor status with the Golden State rate case, because I note that in Mr. Clark's report, that they've asked that the cost of flow testing the fire suppression system be added to the rate structure. In other words, when we ask them to follow proper standards, they want more money. I, I think there's an issue there, and I'm very happy that the city is going to be filing an intervenor status. I believe you have 30 days from the time of the rate case, which is July 15th, so I hope that gets done in time. I did have a question, I asked Mr. Clark, and neither one of us knew the answer, and that is, can flow, are some members of flow as, with their class action status, be part of the intervenor status with the city of Ojai, or does that need to be a separate intervenor filing? I don't know the answer to that. Mr. Fletcher, if you have any idea? I know you don't have to answer my question, but I'm curious. And last point I want to raise is line pressure. The more data we get, the more questions we have. In those 14 tests, the three of them had the static pressures in excess of 120 PSI. I believe there were two 130s and one 144 PSI. AWWA, the American Water Works Association, has line pressure recommendations generally around 120. I checked the city of Santa Rosa, their maximum line pressure is 120 PSI. The state of Washington is 100 PSI, and the Western Union District around Riverside has 125. Also, I believe there were issues with the, when we had water breaks, of being able to move the isolation valves. I may be incorrect on that, but again, that might be an issue where valves are being installed and not moved. I just have questions. I have personally observed very high pressures ahead of regulators from the line in, in properties that my family's involved with. Every homeowner should check their pressure in their homes if their regulator is old, because it may be too high. I would like to know and have some sense of why we're seeing line pressures in excess of AWWA standards, and is that in any way relate to the issues we've been having with pipe breaks? I don't know the answer to that, I'm asking the question.
Thank you. Is there any response you would like to make? This seems totally outside.
Just like Mr. Wirek and Mr. Clark, I don't know. That's obviously, that's what we will work on, is, is trying to find that out.
You know, I, one of the reasons that we are proposing having intervenor status is because there, there is a general order of the PUC that specifically addresses pressure and maintaining records of pressure, and there are also a variety of maintenance requirements that the PUC has, and I think that we can go after some of these questions, which are very good questions, as we go through that process.
Councilmember Clapp?
I have a question, I have a question in light of Mr. Wirek's question about the Golden State asking to have the expense of testing the fire hydrants be added to the fee structure. Have you heard whether they, the Golden State is also going to be requesting that the repair of the Ojai Theater be added to our rate structure as well? And if you don't know, Mr. Clark, maybe the gentleman from Golden State could answer that question.
Good evening, Robert Hanford again. For the fire hydrant tests, I believe what the filing is talking about is when a developer comes in and wants to develop a new property, that the developer bears, bears that expense, not the existing customers.
This sent the developer, this is the, how does that, how does that apply to the, historically, maybe, maybe it would be helpful for me to explain how this even came about. On Grand Avenue, there was quite a few fire hydrants that for an extended period of time were covered with plastic bags. I think it was months. And so, Ojai Flow brought to the attention of the city that it appeared that these fire hydrants had been, were unusable, out of service. And because of some sort of concern about the historic maintenance or lack of maintenance by Golden State Water in the city, there was concern of how many other fire hydrants could potentially be inoperable. And that is why the city requested through the fire department, the fire department cooperated with us to do a testing of these fire hydrants to make sure that they were operable, and, and because we are in a drought, we are next to a national forest, it's very dry, and we have a lot of old housing stock very close together. How does our request as a city to make sure, after Golden State had so many hydrants clearly out of service, how can our request to have those hydrants checked to make sure that they are in service be considered in the same vein as a developer?
Well, I think there's two separate issues there. The fire hydrant flow test requires testing multiple hydrants to determine what the flow rate is. Testing the operational capability of a fire hydrant can be done much, fairly quickly. So I'm not sure I, I understand the question.
I guess the question is, why do you want to charge the rate payer for something that really should be a cost of doing business? And apparently, a lot of these hydrants hadn't been tested for quite a few years, and it seemed totally appropriate for the city to request that they be tested under the circumstances. Why should that be a burden on the, on the rate payer?
I don't think it's a burden, and again, I have to review the, the filing, and I can get back to you, but I believe it's when a specific request comes in from a third party, that third party is responsible for paying for the fire hydrant flow test.
Okay, I, I, okay, I have another question.
I can re, I can review the filing and get back to you.
Yes, I would like to know.
Yes.
And also, I would like to know if you also are going, Golden State is also going to request that the repairs to the, to the Ojai Playhouse are going to be put on the rate pairs bill as well, if that's going to be requested in this rate hearing?
I don't know. I'd have to check on that.
Yes, I would really like to know that. I think that's very important.
We'd be happy to respond.
To see if, if the citizens of Ojai are going to be required to pay for the repair of an historic theater.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for responding to that. I know we went a little far afield. Did you have any additional comments?
No, I think it's been summed up by the Ventura County Fire Department. All the testing done, everything met the requirements. I think it's important to remember, too, fire hydrant is the very last appurtenance in the water supply system. You have to have your sources of supply, your treatment system, your transmission system, your storage system, your SCADA system, your supervisor, your control and data acquisition, your SCADA system. All these have to be operational and work together cohesively to provide those fire flows. So it's just not, the fire hydrant is at, at the end of the string. Everything else also has to work appropriately.
Thank you. Stan Green?
My name is Stan Green, I live in the city, and I'm very happy the fire department got involved in it. You know, he talks about a system to provide water at the hydrant. There's a system out there where we have wonderful equipment, right? Guys buy good stuff, it works, you maintain it, you drain, you people, you can respond to a fire within minutes, and if you get there and there's no water at the hydrant, the system fails. So when he's talking about what he has to do at his end to get water to the hydrant, he's saying, if our system fails, your system fails. So there's something wrong with the systems if we get a fire and there's no water to put it out. That was a concern, and that was the reason that Flow wrote the letter. Flow does have one of its members who is trying to become an intervenor in this next rate case. I don't know the status of it, but I think that whoever that is for us, that the city ought to support that, or become an intervenor also, so you can go to the meeting and you can state the concerns of the constituents. So the question really is, the fire department has done a good job in checking these, but what happens to the 10% that need repairs? What's the follow-up? Who looks at whether or not those repairs are done, and that those 10% are now functional? I mean, we don't think 10% is big unless it's one right outside your house and you got a fire. Then it gets to be 100% failure. So what I'm looking at, I'm looking for is, what is the follow-up on this inspection that was done? There's no system in the county for ensuring that this happens on a periodic basis. I don't know that there's a rule either at the PUC, or in the fire department, or at the county that says, this will periodically happen, and we'll be assured that when there's water needed, we got 100% assurance that it's going to be there. So this is a one-time thing. What is the future for the citizens of this community in terms of assurance that all of these hydrants will have water, and that they will be working, and you can actually turn on a valve? You know, that, there's something wrong in my concept of what it is that the fire suppression system does, if there's no future, no procedure, no requirement, no responsibility, no source of funding to guarantee that that's the way it's going to be when there's an emergency.
Thank you, Stan.
Madam Mayor, if I may comment?
All right.
I just comment, I think Mr. Green raises some good questions, and just, the, the hydrants that do need repair aren't out of service. We can, we can still get water. So we've checked that all the hydrants are capable of delivering water. They, they do have issues that need to be addressed. So to comment a little bit, so you know that, that had, had we have found a hydrant that was out of service, we would have had it covered and requested that it be repaired immediately. Golden State has assured us that after delivering the hydrant repair notices, that from the receipt of the repair notice, that they'll repair them within 30 days. And I believe that the gentleman here from Golden State Water is man of his word, and that they'll be, they'll be fixed, and I know that, and working with some of the local folks that work here in, in the Ojai office, that they're concerned about it from our conversations with them, that they want to make sure that the repairs are made.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Clark, can you be sure that we require Golden State to provide you with notice when these particular maintenance issues have been corrected? Will do. Report back to us. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes, just for a point of clarity for the public, could you explain how you make sure that these hydrants are, have the capability of, of being operable without doing the actual fire flow, fire testing? Because you only did fire flow testing on 14 hydrants, right?
Yeah, so what we did was, Ryan and his staff met with Golden State Water, and we looked at the different grids. In other words, a grid is a, is an area of hydrants that, that basically have an, you know, a distribution system. And we picked hydrants that would be both closest to the source and the farthest from the source. So like Running Ridge on that particular system is the farthest, you know, from the source, that was one of the hydrants that we chose. So it represented a cross-section both close to the source and far away from the source. And that was, that was the methodology that they used, and it was our prevention staff that worked with Golden State so that we had a, a good, solid sampling of those grids with the hydrants that were chosen. And that's why the hydrants that you see on the list that was provided by Golden State Water, that they are the, you know, that, those, those hydrants were actually chosen by Ryan and his staff along, so that they met that methodology.
Good.
Madam Mayor? I just had, I think Mr. Green also brought up, is there any system between the fire departments and the water companies to make sure on a, on a, every five-year or 10-year basis to go through this, this testing that the hydrants are functional? I think Mr. Green said, the last time we, we, was '85 or something? Or is there any, like, every five-year or 10-year to check? As you say, you decide on which hydrants you're going to check. But, I mean, is, is that something that communities don't do, and if, if they do not do it, why?
Yes, Mayor, Council Smith. Typically, the city's Public Works Department through the Water Works Manual is the enforcing agency that ensures the system is certified to the water, Water Works Manual, and can supply the, the required fire flow daily demands, those type of things.
And in the county, who does it?
It's, it's through Public Works.
It's Public Works.
Correct.
So then Public Works.
Would bring you guys out if they had a problem, or they would call the water company?
Typically not. Typically, it falls under the water purveyor's engineer, licensed engineer, to certify that system to the Water Works Manual, and any testing concerns and such would be done either, either through them or through independent third-party consultant water, water engineers. Fire Department typically does not get involved on that side of it.
Okay, so the chain would be the Water Works Manual for a specific area will direct what the Public Works Department will have to do, and how often to check that the hydrants are, are working?
Correct.
Okay.
And the testing we did here was a little bit out of the normal for us. The flow testing observations and working with the engineers would be done on a private water system.
Mm-hmm.
We would be typically involved, but on a municipal system, that's typically not in the history of us.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have a question for the fire department staff. In this case, we don't have, this is, I, I question whether the city has authority to impose this testing obligation, since we don't control the water system. I think when so, most of the time, in my personal experience, the city has owned the water system, so it's our water system, which is managed by the Public Works Department, who can set up the testing schedule. I think the question that Mr. Green asks is, in areas where you have private water systems, private water purveyors, who has the regulatory control over setting standards for testing? I, I don't think that we, as the city, have the authority to do that, because, again, our franchise is only a license to use the streets, but we specifically exclude any regulatory issues in it. So I, I'm a little concerned that, I don't want folks to walk away thinking that we can now simply, you should order to Golden State Water and order them to do some periodic testing. I'd love to hear from them, how they deal with other, other municipalities in terms of, because the question's extremely excellent question, how, there should be a standard, some, I'm sure there's an industry standard on how often, so how do we, who has the regulatory authority to make sure that happens?
Mr. Hanford?
Mayor, council members, if I could respond to the question. The first part is the remedial repairs. We're about a third of the way completed. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, we'll be 100% completed. All the repair orders will be going back to the Ventura County Fire Department to confirm that the appropriate repairs have been made. So just to close the loop on that. So just to close the loop on that. As far as the routine and schedule, as part of our filing, we've proposed a fire hydrant gate valve maintenance program. It's part of the filing. It'll be reviewed by both DRA, by Department Rate Pair Advocates, who support the consumer during the rate case process, as well as by the PUC staff. Both DRA and PUC have engineers on their staff to be able to make technical reviews of this policy. So right now, we're proposing, as it's a trade-off between cost and reliability, we're proposing a three-year schedule for fire hydrants and a five-year schedule for gate valves. And as far as fire departments, I've worked with fire departments, you know, in California and in Arizona. I've worked with some fire departments where the fire department would go through and touch every hydrant once a year, let us know what's going on, get back to us, and we'd make the remedial repairs. So it's really, the formal processes in the rate case filing, if you do decide to intervene, you can comment, comment on that as well, hire your own consultants, your experts, and review that proposed maintenance procedure.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, did you have?
Yeah, I, I think that the really hazy question that everybody's kind of working towards is, where's the oversight? Are we counting on the fire department for oversight? Are we counting on the PUC for oversight? Are we counting on someone else for oversight? Is it the city? And, and that's the key question that needs to be cleared up next. Because you can have a schedule that says you test every so often, and you can either, and you can have a requirement that you keep records for a certain amount of time, but if nobody's checking to see if that testing's performed, or if those records are kept, it's just a bunch of words. And so that, that, in my mind, is the key issue that we're trying to get at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one more speaker card. William Ulrich.
William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road. That most recent two comments by Mr. Fletcher and Mr. Clark, I think are particularly appropriate right now. I believe Mr. Fletcher just established a city policy that there is no authority for oversight. Mr. Clark's question about whether there is oversight is sort of contravened by my conversation with Greg Grant, the Public Works Director, who told me it's city policy not to engage in any oversight of Golden State. And that's not acceptable, because PUC does not engage in oversight onsite, as in the streets, the hydrants, how the system works. Now, so, this is smoke and mirrors, gentlemen. And for you, Mr. Fletcher, to state that in advance, everyone's heard it.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Refrain from being aggressive with our staff. Make your comments to the city council.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I don't believe I was being aggressive, however, I will adopt your approach.
Thank you.
Having said that, Chief, were any of the 14, which by my calculations are 3.9% of all of the fire hydrants in the city, were any of those flow tested?
Mr. Ulrich, address the council.
Oh, excuse me. In that case, were any of the flow tests performed on a four-inch, on a hydrant that was situated on a four, on the end of a four-inch main?
Finish your comments.
That, okay. So that's, that question should, will be answered later.
This is a time for your comments to the city council.
Okay.
It is not your time.
The validity, in that case, Madam Mayor, let me continue. The validity of the tests, the 14, the 3.9% executed, is a minimal amount, and are only effective if the flow tests were operational flow tests, without being curtailed and minimized by a certain type of model that can be used. Further, whether the flow tests were representative of all of the types, not simply the grid, but all of the types of mains, that this are inherent in the system. What I'm coming to is this, the flow tests may not be probative of anything, and the reassurances that we've received, I do not, at this particular point, notwithstanding the good graces and the good intentions, may not be representative of an accurate depiction of the condition of the system. Because there's a lot of folks involved in this, and there's a lot of different ways of shading the information. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have on this item. Is there anyone else in the audience, any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, going back to the agenda, and first of all, I, I do want to thank the fire department again for being so responsive to our request, and, and going out and testing these, and input would be greatly appreciated in terms of, of procedure, or whatever we need to do. I, I think the ultimate question is, who has oversight? And, and figure that out, whether it be going and have, make a formal party status for the general rate case. I absolutely think that that's, needs to be done by the city. And, and just clear it up and see how much input that we could have on what Golden State is requesting to the PUC. I agree that we should enter that, and I, I think we should go from there, and I'll be in favor of, of directing staff to do that.
So Councilmember Laura, are you making a motion to direct the city manager to seek formal party status for the city in the Golden State Water General Rate Case for 2016, 2018?
That's correct. Do I need to make a motion? I didn't know, because it was a discussion item, so, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Number two. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is Ojai Valley Green Coalition Partnership Agreement. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. As you'll recall, during the budget process, we were opposed by the Green Coalition, who made a, a budget request. And we held that over to give me an opportunity to meet with, with them and discuss options for potentially working together. And, and I do note, we have a roadmap to sustainability, and one of the things that's recommended in the roadmap to sustainability is that we develop partnerships, and specifically with the Green Coalition. And I think my observation over time has been that the Green Coalition, as a community organization, has really functioned in a lot of ways as an extension of the staff to do some of the things that we can't do. And so the proposal tonight is to kind of formalize that arrangement, and to ask them to do specific things that are important for implementing our environmental policies, but for which we don't have enough staff. And I do think that this is a really cost-effective way of going about it. If we were to hire additional people, for example, it would be very expensive. We've got a group that's got the motivation and the expertise to help us, and so that's what's being proposed. And one of the, one of the key programs, I brought show and tell today. One of the key programs that I'm suggesting that they help us with is with our dark sky ordinance. As you know, we have a requirement in our dark sky ordinance that if you have a porch light that's not shielded or downward-directed, you should turn it off at 10 o'clock. And our success rate in getting that to happen is essentially nil. We, we've tried to get the word out, we've tried to get people to cooperate, but it's, it's hard to get people's attention, and I think it's a hard thing for people to remember to do. So we've gone out on the market, and we've found a couple kinds of shields that can be put on existing porch lights, that would accomplish our goal, and leave it, so that people can leave their porch lights on if they want. So this one fits over a bare light bulb. You just put it over the socket, and it hangs down, and it blocks, and then you screw the light bulb in, and it blocks the light from going out or up. It only goes down. I think it was about 12 bucks. There's another one, which I was really hoping to have for you today, which is actually just a light bulb that has a built-in shield, and it only allows the light to shine out in one direction. I think what we're going to find is that there's no one-size-fits-all solution. Everybody's got a different kind of porch light. But we are proposing that 4,000 of the $10,000 go to a demonstration program where we'll, with the cooperation of the Green Coalition, try and get 80 residents, for no cost to them, to install these types of devices, to see if we can make progress on our, our goal of having dark skies. There's also incorporated into this project some general support for the Green Coalition. They've provided several years' worth of operating records, and their financial status is very tenuous. And if we want them to continue to be a resource for us, I think there's an element of operating support that, that needs to be supplied as well. So that's about 5,000 of the, of the 10,000. And this is a one-year proposal. We'd work through the year, evaluate it at the end of the year, and then if there are funds available, and we feel it's a good investment, we could consider going for future years. So that's, that's about all I have. I know Deborah Pendry's here, and she may have some comments as well, or we'd be glad to answer your questions.
I just have one question of staff, Madam Mayor. In the proposal, it seeks to appropriate the $10,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund. Is there any issues of being able to, to fund this through the Capital Improvement Fund?
No, we have sufficient money, and we're considering it to be a project, even though it's a small project. So yes, we can fund it through the Capital Improvement Fund.
Thank you.
And would we be entering into a contract with the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, or is this just a council action?
So you're, you're, I will, in fact, sign an agreement, but it's within my authority if you appropriate the $10,000. So I wouldn't have to bring that agreement back unless you'd like me to.
Madam Mayor? It's because it's under a certain amount, correct?
That's correct.
Just for clarification, what is the, what is the max, the maximum amount of money that you can authorize before going before council?
$10,000.
Any other questions from council at this time for staff? I have several speaker, speaker cards. Russell Sidney.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Russell Sidney. I'm with the Sustainable Transport Network and the Electric Vehicle Advocates of Ventura County. We've had the good fortune to build relationships with the Ojai Valley Green Coalition over the years, and have been very appreciative and impressed with the work that they do, with the leadership that they're providing, and the value that they're providing to the community. We totally support and encourage you in this, in your interest in working with this group. And they have been successful in bringing the electric vehicle owners and the electric vehicle advocacy into this, this community through their, through their works. We support them in that effort, and are excited about the, the prospects of building closer relationships with the city of Ojai through the coalition, and through their leadership, and the wise council and direction that guides us in our efforts to help bring sustainable transportation into your community. We're particularly excited and appreciative of the charging structure that you have in the valley here. I have even written about it in not only articles, but in a book that I have written. So the, the renown of Ojai as a sustainable place is spreading, and part of that is due to the good efforts of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And we're hoping that at some point in the future, we'll be able to get some solar systems attached to the charging systems to improve the sustainability of both the community and the transportation network. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sidney. C-O-T-H-A-N, John Cotan. I probably mutilated that for you.
That's John Cotum, 111 Topa Topa. And, and I just wanted, I'll be brief, I just wanted to also encourage my support for the work that the Green Coalition does, and the partnership with the city. It's something that I've long hoped for, and it's ever since the roadmap to sustainability was developed by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Squire. Squire?
Diane Squire. I'm at 703 G. North Ventura Street in Ojai. I've worked as a volunteer with the Green Coalition for multiple years, and it's, it's been an effort of love on so many people, on seeing that you can bring ideas and, say, forward-thinking and future-thinking, to make Ojai a really special place. It already is, but even more so. And now with the drought and the continuing problems there, they're needed more than ever to help people understand what we can do with gray water systems, what we can do. We have a, a green home tour coming up this fall, that we've had it multiple times. It brings in people to the community who are tourists and spend revenue here. And there are a lot of, we bring in educational programs that also help people understand what they can do in their own lives to make an impact, to help the, the community, the local growers, gardeners. It, it has so many ramifications on home and, and health, that I just want to say thank you for considering this, and I support your supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have for this item. Any other member? Dale?
Dale Hanson, I live in the city. I'm a former board member of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and actually, one of the founding members of it. I so strongly support your partnership with them. They do excellent work, and I think it benefits the city to do this. Thank you.
I actually had a speaker card, and I lost a speaker card. Cynthia Greer, and I'll just quickly say, ditto. I support it, and, and strongly encourage you to support this action. I, I think it will benefit us continuing to hold on to our uniqueness as a sustainable, beautiful destination. And I applaud you all for these ordinances that you've passed recently that help us move further along the roadmap to sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from council? Oh, Deborah. We waited for you.
Deborah Pendry, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. I do live at 309 Riverside Road. Thank you for accepting our proposal for review and consideration. I think it's important, every community at this point in juncture needs a coalition. We just knew. We just do. And when this came up, and Mr. Clark suggested the way it be presented, I started thinking about nonprofits in general, NGOs, the groups that we have in our communities, and they all, in some capacity, subcontract, if we think about it. They might be self-appointed, but they're subcontracting. They're consulting to their community. And they're doing it almost always from certainly a place of heart and passion for what they're bringing to the community. So that is the coalition. We care a lot. I think we bring a lot to the community. We bring a lot to the city of Ojai, the whole valley. And I know we have a very specific city and county, but that line in the sand, that's pretty much what it is. You know, we are a community, and the city is the nucleus for us, and to have your, your support, and you as a foundation, as part of our foundation, will help us, you know, spread out to more of the Ojai Valley and continue doing our, our work. It is a challenge. People love to put their names on projects, and it's important. But we have a right to a room, and a desk, and a light, to do our work, and a living wage. And I hope you find the $35 an hour modest and doable as subcontractors for helping the city, and to let us continue doing our work in the community. And I think it'll also help spread the word and encourage other people to support us as individuals, and increase our membership, again, so we can have a strong financial base to keep doing our work, because there's no end in sight. So thank you.
Mr. Eicher?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Scott Eicher, CEO of the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce. I too was one of the founding members of the Green Coalition. I too was one of the founding members of the Green Coalition, and unless I'm wrong, the Green Coalition was one of the driving, in fact, probably the primary driving force behind this roadmap to sustainability. I believe they were the source of the majority of the work, the research, the legwork, the out-in-the-field research that brought this to the town. And so I think that you should accept their proposal to help them implement what they primarily designed years ago, almost five, about five years ago? So that's a long time to bring it together. It's less time than it took for a skate park, but nonetheless, almost as soon as that roadmap to sustainability was passed and accepted here by the council, a previous city manager did what they do with most things, and they put it right up on the shelf. So I would really like to see the council support the implementation of the sustainable, the roadmap to sustainability and accept the proposal from the Green Coalition. Thank you.
Any other members from the public wish to speak on this item? I'll bring you back to council.
Madam Mayor?
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I do have a question, just on clarity. According to staff report, it's more about helping us educate and not doing public policy, right? Is that correct? Rob?
Yes, as far as the contract with us goes, yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I think that as a valley, as a community, we are really tremendously blessed by having organizations like the Green Coalition. And, you know, you take a look at the health of a community, and you look at all the volunteerism that's going on in the community, because you can't rely on government to do it all. And when I look at organizations like Ojai Flow or the Ojai Defense Fund, our museum, Ojai Skate, all these organizations have come into our community to better the community. And sometimes it's really rewarding when you're on this side of the dais, working in government, to be able to find a way to provide these organizations with some funding, because you truly bring a lot more expertise to the table than we as a government could ever provide. And the job that you perform is so much better than we could perform it. So I am totally in favor of supporting this proposal, and I am, I can't thank, you know, the Green Coalition, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and all the other volunteer organizations in our valley, because without you, we really couldn't function as well as we do. So thank you. And I'll make the motion if you'd like.
Well, before you do.
Unless anybody else has anything to say.
I want to say that I have some concerns about this. I'm concerned that it's setting a precedent. And I know how much work and how valuable the Green Coalition is for the City of Ojai and the valley. That's why I do, as an individual, make a donation to the Green Coalition every year as an individual. I'm concerned about this being seen as a gift of public funds. If it's something we, what is the relationship here? I'm unclear on what kind of relationship would be built.
So I think you're asking a very good question, and I wanted to make sure that this was structured differently than just organizational support to a good organization. So what we're actually doing is we're contracting for a service. We don't have anyone on staff who has the time to go around and find people who have porch lights that need to have shields and to get that program going, but we have a city policy that says we want that to happen. So at a very economical rate, we're contracting with this organization to perform that service and other services. So it's, in my mind, specifically a contract for a service that wouldn't have been done if we didn't have the contract in place, and it's a service that is consistent with our policies and desires.
Okay. And someone mentioned that it would be, I think it was you, that it would be a contract for one year.
Right. This is a one-year project, and then if, and we'll evaluate it at the end of the year and see if it's the kind of thing we want to consider in the future.
All right. So it'll, the year will begin upon the possible approval, if the council approves it, that will, the year will begin at that point.
I'm really thinking of it as being the current fiscal year, so it's actually more like a 10-month situation, so that, because it's going to be a financial decision that we need to make in the context of the budget next year. So it would be during the current fiscal year, the remainder of the current fiscal year.
I would be willing to support this as an experimental-type situation, and I want to be assured that there is a limit on the term. I don't want this to go year, I don't want it indefinite. I want one year. I want, from our city staff, measurable results. Is it worth the money that we are invested? I'm still concerned about, you know, what about workers' comp? How are they, are these volunteers, and therefore they're under our insurance policy?
No, we wouldn't provide insurance. That's up to them.
Well, you can see my concerns.
Right.
So assuming those are going to be looked into, I could support this as long as we have a definite one-year or 10-month term. Any other comments, questions from council?
I think you brought up a very good point, and we would look at, we could look at this every year, and what projects could they help us working on that are on our roadmap to sustainability? You know, I was looking, could they fall under CBDG grants? And they couldn't. So I think what the limited contract to look at every year is a very good way to exactly do what Mayor Strobel brought up, where that, if there's no guarantee it will happen again next year unless there's a proposal on our roadmap to sustainability on what they will accomplish, and that we were satisfied with what they accomplished the year before, and the benchmarks were met. I would love to support them, but they're, it's tricky. So I think keeping it in the guidelines that our city manager has placed, I think, can work.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yeah, me. You mentioned insurance. There's an insurance policy in their, in their statement of activities, they're like their P and L, insurance liability, D and O. So you do have a liability insurance. Is that correct, Deborah?
Yes, we have directors and officers, we have general liability, we have employees, we have volunteer liability. We have specific writers.
Good. Okay. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we'll, as I was going to say, we're going to set up the agreement as an independent contractor agreement there, as you do with other third-party service agreements. So we'll have all the standard requirements for insurance, indemnity, third-party, I mean, independent contractor, so no liability on the part of the city treatment. It's legally and, you know, literally an arms-length transaction.
The last comment that I'll make is something else that bothers me, and that is that of the $10,000 being requested, $5,000 of that will be for administrative expenses. That's the end of my comments. Councilmember Laura, did you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I really do, I definitely understand the concerns you brought up, very good concerns, because it is potentially setting a precedent and thinking that organizations would get support, but the way I look at it is that we do have a road to sustainability, and we have asked the coalition to help us at times, and I think they're gracious, and me being part of their liaison, I've seen them work really hard to do program outreach, education, and that's what I think as a city we don't have in our department, and I think is very needed. So I think in a way, if it could come up every year and review in a proposal, I think it could work in that, in that package. So I do support them, and I'm ready to move on, so.
Any other comments? Michelle?
Michelle Thomas, 1125 Del Prado Court. I just want to say, our valley is under assault from all sorts of things environmentally. They're offering us education that's desperately needed, gray water. I mean, I don't even know that much about it, but everything I'm hearing right now, I'm all excited about it. Please approve it. Let them help us become sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Laura?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a partnership agreement with the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, OVGC, to provide technical assistance with implementation of the roadmap to a sustainable Ojai and appropriate $10,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund.
I'll second.
Is there any way that I can request an amendment to the motion to include that it's for a term of one year or 10 months, whatever? Is that necessary?
Madam Mayor, I don't think it's necessary, because all we're doing is that the city manager's going to enter into a partnership agreement. The partnership agreement is part of our package, and it's for a term of one year, and I don't think it's necessary to limit it that way.
Roll call? Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel? Yes. Fooled you, didn't I? Okay. The next item on our agenda is 2014 Annual Conference Resolutions for the League of California Cities. Mr. Clark, no, Rhonda?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protemp and council members. At the July 22 regular council meeting, you appointed Councilmember Lar to represent the City of Ojai at the annual, 2014 Annual Conference. At this conference, there'll be a business meeting where there will be one resolution to consider calling upon the governor and the legislation to convene a summit to address the devastating environmental impacts of illegal marijuana grows on both private and public lands throughout California and the increasing problems to public safety related to these activities by working in partnership solutions and to secure adequate funding for cost-effective inflammation strategies. When Councilmember Lar attends the business meeting, he needs the full support of city council in order to vote on this resolution. So we're here this evening to find out how the council would like Councilmember Lar to vote.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protemp, Smith?
I'm in favor of voting yes to support the, what's it, the resolution. Right.
I'm in favor of voting yes to support the resolution, the medical marijuana, whichever.
It's growing it on, it's taking.
Illegal growing of marijuana. I don't know that it's medical marijuana.
No, it's on state land.
I support the league's resolution.
Right.
Madam Mayor, I also support the resolution.
I support it.
Okay.
You got it.
Yeah, direction.
But we didn't ask Councilmember Laura.
I support it, too.
That's true. That's right. Maybe he doesn't.
Okay, at this time, the Ojai City Council will recess, will convene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. We have the consent calendar items, A and B.
So moved?
Second.
Roll call? Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel? Yes. At this point, we'll adjourn the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency and reconvene the Ojai City Next on the agenda is reports from council members. Any reports from council members? Okay, I'm going to save our city clerk for last. Mr. Clark?
I'd like to yield my time to Chief Kenny and ask him to give a brief report on how he's handled the issue of dogs that have had problem owners.
Dogs, what?
Dogs with problem owners.
Perfectly good dogs with bad owners.
Exactly. We, as you know, we have received complaints of the pit bulls and the arcade and things of that nature. And in the past, when we would make an arrest of the owner, many times the dog was left with one of the owner's friends, who was equally irresponsible. If we had to wait for animal control, like we do today, it takes about two hours. And so what we've done is we purchased our own dog kennel. We've installed that in the back of the PD. We're going to plumb it with water and all of those things. We give Bob Wisma from Animal Control, he'll have access to it. And basically, we put the dog in there, we ensure it'll have food and water, and then he can come two hours later, three hours later, he'll have access and he can pick it up. He then leaves us a receipt for the dog, and the receipt will be attached to the arrest report or to the officer's log. And so this allows your deputies to, one, take care of the problem, and then get it back out into the field as soon as possible to continue handling calls.
Excellent.
That's where we're at.
Good job. Is that it from you?
I yield my time.
Mr. Fletcher?
Nothing, ma'am.
Anything else, Chief Kenny? City clerk? I was looking to see if we had any depart, any comments from our finance director? Is that it? City clerk Rhonda Bayshore?
I'd like to notify you that the following people have qualified to run for city council in the November 2014 election. Paul Blatt, William Wirick, Brandon Hanson, Stephen Quilice, and Randy Haney. Tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., the state will draw the alphabet, and therefore they'll be listed accordingly, and I will let the city council know when I check their website. I'd also like to let you know that the measures have been lettered. So Measure A is a question. Shall the electors elect a mayor and four city council members? Measure B is, shall the term of office of mayor be for two years? And Measure C is, shall the term of office of mayor be for four years? Impartial analysis, arguments, and any other information is available for public review for 10 days, which ends on August 18. After that, then everything is confidential until after the election. So if anyone would like to see the arguments, please have them contact my office, 8 to 5, Monday through Friday.
The signatures that you gave me for the people for the arguments for against?
I can announce those if you'd like.
Yeah, but will these show up on the ballot?
Yes.
In other words, there's one, two, how many people are there?
There was five that signed the for arguments and three that signed the against.
Right. Now, are these people supposed to have written the arguments, or they're just in support of it? How do we know who wrote it?
That's unknown. It's a collaborative group of people that got together, so I don't know specifically.
So the assumption is that if you're on the names for, let's say you, your name is on the list for the argument, then it's assumed that you wrote it.
Well, not the whole thing. As I said, it's a collaborative group, and that you put in, input on it.
Okay.
And agree with.
But you put input on it, okay.
And agree with what was written, otherwise you wouldn't have signed it.
So if that's the case, then if anyone on this list did not put input, they just actually for it, can they remove their name from it between now and the 18th?
There is a deadline. I can check on that for you and get back to you.
Or can they add their name to it?
It cannot be, no names can be added at this time. The filing period is closed for arguments.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and are there any other questions for our city clerk? I know this is an important issue. We're good? issue. We're good? All right. We have a closed session. Two issues, a conference with legal counsel, potential litigation for Government Code Section 54956.9c. One potential case, city of Glendale lawsuit on RDA interest rates. The second issue is a conference with labor negotiator, Government Code Section 54957.6, agency-designated representative, city manager, Rob Clark, regarding management employees. Do we anticipate any announcements?
No. No. Sir Carter?
This one for you guys are not.